Hello and welcome to the League of Women Voters of Dearborn, Dearborn Heights Candidate Forum. My name is Betsy Cushman and I am the President of the League. This program is presented and produced as a public service by the League of Women Voters in cooperation with the City of Dearborn Heights. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan national organization which encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government, works to increase understanding of major policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League never supports or opposes candidates or political parties. Membership is open to men and women age 18 or older. Tuesday, November 3rd is an important general election, yet very few citizens are expected to vote. There are five candidates running for three seats on the city council, and each one you elect will make a difference. Where do they stand on issues? Which ones most closely reflect your views? Where do you find free and nonpartisan ballot information? One of the most reliable sources is the League of Women Voters online at vote411.org. Are you aware that there is also an important ballot proposal to amend the Dearborn Heights City Charter? And for residents of Dearborn Heights who live in School District Number 7, there is an important bond proposal. To see a voter guide with information before you vote about the candidates and the ballot proposals, go online to vote411.org. Now I would like to introduce the guest moderator of tonight's forum, Paula Bowman, a member of the Northwest Wayne County League of Women Voters and of the State Board. Paula.
Good evening. Today is Monday, September 21st, and we're taping a Dearborn Heights City Council Candidate Forum. As always, the League of Women Voters is not responsible for the views expressed by the candidates in tonight's forum. Members of the audience, if you haven't done so already, everybody please turn off your cell phones. There should not be any use of cameras or other recording devices without, unless you have been given prior authorization from the League. The candidates have agreed to the following plans. The order in which the candidates speak has been determined by drawing lots. Each candidate will have a one-minute opening statement, one minute to answer each of the questions, and the order will be rotated. At the end of the question period, they will end with a one-minute closing statement. The timekeeper is a League member and will raise a card to notify the candidate that their time expires. The questions that we'll be asking are a combination of those from tonight's audience members and some composed by the League of Women Voters. Index cards have been made available and our League personnel are still circulating with those. And we'll be collecting those throughout the evening if something strikes you, and you can get it to our question screener here and they'll check it over. And the question screeners are there because they are looking at the questions to prevent duplication, personal attacks, and if a question only addresses one candidate, we may amend it a little bit so that it will apply to all of the candidates. We already have a lot of questions. There's no way we're going to get them all asked, so don't be offended if yours doesn't make it to the top of the pile. Five candidates are running for three positions, and each position is a four-year term on the Detroit City Council. I'm sorry, Dearborn Heights City Council. The five candidates in alphabetical order are Wassim Abdullah, Ned Apigian, Troy Brown, Lisa Hick Clayton, and Raymond Muscat. We're going to start with our opening statement. Mr. Brown picked the first card, so he goes first. Go ahead with your one-minute opening statement.
Okay. My name is Troy Brown, and I'm a 16-year resident of Dearborn Heights, my wife Heidi and three children. I am a controls engineer with an automation company in Warren, Michigan. I served three years in the Army, and when I returned, I began my career in the controls electrical field where I still find employment. I believe the flood of 2014 has thrust me into doing something for the community. I started to investigate, started to research why our home gets flooded at least three or four times a year. So I am here tonight as really wanting to be a servant and continue on that service to the City of Dearborn Heights.
Thank you. Mr. Muscat.
My name is Raymond Muscat, and I've been a resident of the city for approximately 50 years. I'm married to my wife Lisa. I have three children and four grandchildren. I attended Crestwood High School and Henry Ford Community College where I served training for being an apprentice at Ford Motor Company. I worked for Ford for 42 years, and I've attended these city council meetings here in this city for the last 12 years on a regular basis. I try to stay attached to all the citizens, their needs and their wants, and I hope to do a good job if elected.
Thank you. Ms. Hick Clayton.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. It's great to see you here. My name is Lisa Hick Clayton. I'm currently a member of the Dearborn Heights City Council. I was elected in 2011. Prior to that, I was an educator for 23 years, teaching kindergarten, first grade. I have three beautiful children and a strong family that supports what we're doing here. I want to share with you that as a city council member, I feel very strongly about civic engagement, encouraging our residents to have a voice, and remember that we are public servants, so we need to raise the bar of that. I serve on the Southeast Michigan Council of Government and Michigan Municipal League as well, different committees and task force, which provides opportunity to provide more resources and networking opportunity to our residents. So again, as our charter states clearly, we are to do what's in the best interest of our city and our residents, and again, we take that very seriously, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Abdullah.
Good afternoon. My name is Wassim Abdullah. You may know me more from real estate. I work with Century 21. There I go by the name Dave Abdullah. I've been selling real estate in the City of Dearborn Heights for almost 30 years now, and as a matter of fact, my office is right at Ford Road and Beach Daily here. I've been a resident of the city for 15 years and live right off of Beach Daily. I graduated from the University of Michigan School of Management, and I graduated there with a double major, degree in marketing and a degree in finance. I have my beautiful wife Lena and three lovely kids, Rhonda, Alina, and Hisham. All my extended family lives in the area, so I have my parents, my uncles, aunts, brothers, sisters, in-laws, they all live in the same city, and that's one reason why I wanted to get back to this great city. One of the things that I want to work on as a city councilman is I want to work on a little more economic development in the city, especially in the South Heights area.
Thank you, Mr. Abdullah.
Thank you.
Mr. Apigian.
Hi. My name is Ned Apigian. I'm presently a councilperson on Dearborn Heights City Council. I'm 77 years old. I was born and raised in Niagara Falls, New York. From a high school and technical vocational school where I studied technical draft. After high school, I joined the Marines. After the Marines, I came to Michigan to go to school with my sister as my sponsor. I attended Henry Ford Community College, subsequently earned two associate's degrees in science and in liberal arts. I'm married to the former Araxim Adoyan for 51 years. We have one daughter, 50 years old, who lives in Boston, Massachusetts. We have four grandchildren, and my time is up.
Thank you. We'll start the question period now. Mr. Brown, we're going to start with you. What issues of police and public safety need attention?
Well, I believe that our police department needs equal grants and opportunity that our fire department's getting. I see a lot of that going. I believe that our officers, our time, our response time needs to be improved. I don't know, again, I don't have any facts to back anything up like that. That's what I hear, and I believe that we need to support our public safety officers, including the police officers, with all of the equipment, all the training that they need. And I know we place a big emphasis on that. We see that. They're active. The chief's active here, but I believe there's more work to do there in supporting our officers.
Thank you. Mr. Muscat.
I have a son-in-law that's a policeman, so I guess I favor policemen quite a bit. I hear a lot of stories. I think we have a good police force here in Dearborn Heights. I do hear of the complaints that our police response time is low. I have not personally witnessed that since I called the police. I've always seen them respond at a pretty good time. Policemen have a tough job to do, and we need to respect the jobs that they do do. But I think that we need to have more policemen patrolling instead of just out trying to give tickets. I'd like to see patrolling in the neighborhoods at night like we see them during the day. I don't think we see enough police officers at night, especially in crucial areas that are problematic, and there are a lot of problematic places in this city that needs attention.
Thank you. Ms. Hick Clayton.
Thank you. Would you repeat the question, please?
Sure. What issues of police and public safety need attention?
Okay, very good. Thank you. I want to say with our police and fire, public safety, of course, is always a priority and a very important issue for our city and for our residents. I do feel that partnering with the neighborhood associations and different organizations throughout the community is important so we can address the issues that are happening in our subdivisions in the residential area to increase responsiveness. Programs like the Dearborn Heights Light Up the Night Program are great because it connects the residents to the police and fire. It's a partnership. I am proud of the grant opportunities that have been brought forth in our city, including the fire department with the SAFER grants, which allows for hiring additional firefighters to bring us to full strength, including preference for veterans. So I'd like to see veterans employed as well. And of course, updating our equipment, vehicles, as well as the rescue vehicles with the fire department are very important because they are aging, just like our community is aging, so we have to stay on top of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Abdullah.
I think our police department overall has done a great job in this city. Is there improvements that we can make? Absolutely. One of the things that I personally would like to see is a lot less monitoring for speedsters on the main road and a lot more drive-bys throughout the subdivisions. I'd also like to see a little bit more involvement with the schools as far as the children's concerned. The response overall has been excellent. Anytime any police officer has been called, the response has been excellent as far as what I can see. We have a great police chief here. Two other things I think we'd like to improve on is a little bit more maybe reserves being involved in the neighborhoods. And in addition to that, a little bit more training and involvement as far as crime watch is concerned with the different neighborhoods with the police department. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Apigian.
As I think of our police department and our fire department as well, we're looked upon as a very professional operation, and that being true, I think we have nothing but to be proud of. I'd like to mention one very important thing. If you look at our budgets for the last two years, we've increased our budget to the police department over a million dollars in the last two years. Now, if we have a deficit, I'm not sure whether we're up to 100% of our staffing. I believe we still need two or three people to make us at 100% staffing. Other than that, I don't see any particular problems. I'm quite satisfied with our operations.
Thank you. We'll start this next question with Mr. Muscat. What do you think are the pros and cons of the Dearborn Heights ballot proposal regarding publishing public notices?
I remember when I was here at the city council meeting for that. You know, publishing is, has been, and always will be, and I feel should be, the way to communicate with the citizens. Citizens need to know when there are different proposals being put out, legal notices in the paper. I know city council passed the resolution for it to be put on the ballot just recently, and I fully support that.
Thank you. Ms. Hick Clayton.
Yes, the ballot question, which is an amendment change to the charter, the pros would be when we take into consideration that with the use of technology, many people are accessing information via social media, different networks. A lot of newspapers are going to that, utilizing that as a means to get information out. However, that is a pro because it's, one, it's going to save the city money, because those publications do cost us quite a bit. However, there is still, the con would be the other side of the coin where there is a population here in Dearborn Heights that does not use the Internet or access computers, so therefore, we're still needing to close that gap, that communication gap, and make sure that information is available to everybody in our city.
Thank you. Mr. Abdullah.
Personally, I'm pro publishing, you know, for publishing notices. Only thing I'd like to see a little bit more happening in the city is a lot more social media, you know, like Lisa just mentioned, especially with the younger generation. A lot of them are going to be using things like Facebook, Twitter, et cetera, et cetera. So I think we should go a little bit more to that. In addition to that, there's a program that's used in Dearborn. I believe it's not Nextel, Next something. Yeah. And that's also something that I think should be added in the City of Dearborn Heights. In addition to that, I think we should have a lot better website. We currently have an okay website, but I think they could take it another two, three notches as far as the website is concerned to have it more accessible to more people. I would definitely continue with the paper though, because there are still a lot of people in the city that do want the good old local paper, which I still personally read, so I understand that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Apigian.
I think the question is not bifurcated as to how we inform the community as to what's going on. As it relates to the ballot question, the ballot question has to do with an anachronism in the charter that required us to make announcements based on our so-called authorized newspaper, which we do not have. It's not a question of how we inform people on the Internet. And the charter is full of anachronisms if somebody asks, and that question was to solve one of those problems. Hopefully, we thought it might save us money, but it's not an issue in communicating with the world.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
I believe that the charter, modifying the charter should be taken very seriously, and as the councilwoman brought up, it's not necessarily that everybody's on the Internet, everybody's got a smartphone in Dearborn Heights. So there has to be a balance. I'm not sure that we have to modify the charter to acquire that balance. And I understand the wording, and I understand the wording in other places in the charter, but I believe in enacting, we really need to address that communications because I know there's been a lot of meetings that I've been excluded from because I can't read the fine print in the newspaper. So there has to be a balance. If the charter needs to be modified legally, then I guess then we've got to consider that as a people. But I think that the most important thing is to get the website and the modern communications up to speed and continue to post it in the newspaper until it's up to speed.
Thank you. Ms. Hick Clayton, you'll be the first to answer this question. Well-kept houses impact the property values of all homes in the community. With increased numbers of rental homes, the city is experiencing increased blight that impacts home values and quality of life. What mechanism would you advocate to reduce housing blight in Dearborn Heights?
All right. Interesting enough, we have about 5,000 rental properties in Dearborn Heights, and regulating the condition and operation of the rental housing is a major challenge that our city faces. I think it is important to set the bar for them, for, you know, property owners, homeowner, rental management company, or landlord, to raise that bar and enforce the codes that we already have on the books. We have things in place to address those issues. It comes down to enforcement. There are a variety of opportunities, though, to encourage this piece from the civic engagement side, and that includes some apps where residents are engaged and sharing with, and again, partnering with the ordinance department, and working together to ensure that our neighborhoods are safe and they're clean and properties are being managed. We need a well-balanced and strategic code enforcement program, which includes the licensing of these properties.
Thank you.
And improving quality. Thank you.
Mr. Abdullah.
One of the first things I personally would like to implement, and this is something I'm familiar with being in the real estate business, there are a lot of rental properties in the City of Dearborn Heights, and I definitely personally would like to see a lot less of them, not completely eliminated, but a lot less of them. Unfortunately, where there are more rental properties, you tend to see the values drop a little bit. How are we going to do that? A little bit more monitoring of certificate of occupancies. Unfortunately, there are certain individuals that will close a deal on a house without having a certificate of occupancy at closing, and therefore, you'll tend to have a house that is not as well-kept. In addition to that, rental properties, or should be enforced, the registration of rental properties. Unfortunately, sometimes it's not as enforced as it should be. And then lastly, I'd like to see a call-in number in the city where people can call in to turn in people that don't have their properties maintained, their rental properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Apigian.
I'm not, I don't know that I want to throw stones at all renters. By definition, renters do not keep their properties up. It's kind of difficult, you know, stone the hurl at all of them, but I'm sure we can find people that have been here a long time that have problems maintaining their property. Our major problem is enforcement. We have four ordinance officers, one part-time, three full-time, operating now. The City of Dearborn has 40. Now, we do a darn pretty good job, especially lately with our new officer. Our problem is enforcement and the issue of finding out what's happening, as Mr. Abdullah just pointed out. We need to know when these houses' sales are made, who owns them, when their certificates of occupancies, because presently, we're required to rental properties every three years.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
Yes, I take it from a stakeholder perspective. The renters do not have a stakeholder stakes in the neighborhood like the owners do, and I'm suggesting that when they pay their taxes, that the owner has to disclose who lives there. I think that the neighbors shouldn't have to generate that data themselves. We should be able to go to the city and find out who works there. Everybody knows who lives at 23420 Hanover because I pay the taxes and I'm the homeowner. Why can't we have that same thing for renters? And so my suggestion is, is do it at tax time, that the owner as well as the occupant has to submit a verified letter of who the official residence, and the owner has to concur. And I think that will help out with the blight and the unkept properties by placing some level of stake in the rental.
Thank you. Mr. Muscat.
This has been one of my pet projects for 12, 15 years, and this is what brought me to city council meetings because of blight. There's got to be ways, you know, of enforcing our codes. We have, you know, people call in, I have called in, and we see nothing happening. This has got to stop. When a complaint's made, there should be a period of time where it's taken care of. This shouldn't go on three, four, five, six, even three years. We've been complaining about homes for over three, four years, and nothing has been done. I want to find out why that happens. Sitting on that side of the desk here, I don't know why it happens, but I'm sure there's an answer somewhere, and that's what I intend to find out.
Thank you. Ms. Hick Clayton.
Oh, I started the...
I'm sorry.
I can answer again if I get more time.
Mr. Abdullah, we'll start with you on this one. If you're an incumbent, name three things you've accomplished for the residents while in office, or if you'll be new to the council, what would you like to accomplish?
Okay. Excellent question. The first thing that I would have accomplished is doing anything within my power to make this city better. How do you do that? You do that by raising property values, which I am experienced in, and you do that by having a lot more economic development. Okay? That means in all the major streets throughout the city, I would like to see a lot less businesses closed down and a lot more vibrant businesses opened up. The second thing that I would do, I'd like to see cleaner streets. I think the streets are pretty clean compared to a lot of cities, but I think it's a challenge for us that I think can be overcome, and that's one of the things that I personally would like to focus on, is having cleaner streets. And the third thing that I'd like to see is better parks, and even better, more parks. That's one of the things that I personally would like to see. I may be a little old-school, I may be a little old, but I'm into having, as a real estate agent, parks in the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Apigian.
The idea that I could say, thanks to me, this got done, I think collectively, whatever we've done, we've done collectively. The only thing that I was able to accomplish, I think, when everybody started calling me the garbage can man, and about the only thing we resolved on that was, please take your cans out at 6 o'clock. Nothing changed. We maintained the 6 o'clock, and then we said, you have to return them at 7:00. We changed the 7:00 to 8:00 because our contract with our trash disposal contractor is at These are things I've been harping on. There are others I'm concerned about, cutting trees, the oversized houses. It's a work in progress, but my time's up.
Mr. Brown.
Okay. The first thing I would like to see is, and I know this is overused, transparency in government, but the fact is, is that there's a lot of things that happens at this table as well as in the administration that we, the people, don't understand, and we don't know where to get the information, and we, quite frankly, it has to come out, and it has to be a willful act for the government to be open in their processes, for their actions to be wide open, to be available to whatever decisions they're making. So that's what I say transparency. I really believe that. Second thing is, is I really believe that the flooding issue that I was a victim of, it's not only just in the South End, it's in the North End as well, maybe not as prevalent, and maybe not as much of a failure of the city, but it's still there. So I'd like to see that. And then finally, I'd like to address certainly the tax issue and our taxes being used appropriately for us.
Thank you. Mr. Muscat.
Well, number one is blight. We just talked about that. That's a big, major concern in this city. Any city that has blight is not going to go anywhere. Again, transparency. I mean, what can we say about transparency? Anything that's done and anything that is going to be done, the people need to know about it and they need to understand it. Okay? We can't have, you know, meetings that are closed. I'm sure there are some meetings that have to be closed, but everything's got to be more brought out into view for everyone to see. And the other big thing for me is to bring the city back to a five-day work week. Working four days, and we city hall open four days a week, just doesn't cut it for me. I mean, we have to get back to a 40-hour work week so taxpayers can get what they rightfully deserve, and not one person's going to change all of this. This is going to be a collective thing and working with the administration and other city council members. Can't be done by one person.
Thank you. Ms. Hick Clayton.
Thank you. I'll start off by sharing the first four-year term that I'm just completing, and it has been a collaborative effort to accomplish different goals and tasks, but I'm particularly proud of the civic engagement piece, offering e-letter communication to our residents. We brought forward the Ping4Alert, which is an app to get updates, and that is with the assistance of residents, by the way, from the Neighborhood Association, Southwest Dearborn Heights Neighborhood Association, offering constituent office hours, and it's really something, working together. Some of our city departments now have Facebook pages as well, so we've been moving towards that, and again, that is totally a collaborative effort. I want to share that there have been resolutions that have been passed that are in the best interest of our city and our residents, and also save the city money, whether it's the intervention for DTE tariff against our city. Also, animal control department was brought back during this first term and addressing public safety issues through our vicious dog ordinance.
Thank you. We'll start this next question. We're going to just do a yes. We're going to just do a yes or a no question, answer on this one, so we can try to get a few more in before we're ready to quit. We're going to start this with Mr. Apigian. Would you support the merging of Dearborn and Dearborn Heights into a single city?
That's not a bad idea, yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Muscat?
No.
Ms. Hicks Clayton?
No.
Mr. Abdullah?
Absolutely not.
Okay. And since that was an easy one, we're going to start, give you, Mr. Apigian, the first crack at this next one. How did Wise Academy, being built on Beach Daily, get a permit?
Because they probably met the requirements necessary. The idea that you could build that Wise Academy and nobody knew about it is preposterous. First of all, that's a use that's permitted in residential districts, and there are other uses there. We may not like it, but I presume the building department says it follows all the rules. It's not an issue that comes to the council.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Yes, I don't really have an opinion. I would assume that it comes to the zoning board.
Mr. Muscat?
I too. I believe it had to go through the zoning board and the building department. I would have no way of knowing why it was built. Nobody knew anything about it.
Ms. Hicks Clayton?
Okay. Well, of course, it would have to go through the zoning board for approval first. That's your first stage, but definitely, you, the building has to meet the requirements, and it is a building use, it's permitted in the area, and you would work through, obviously, the building department to acquire the permits required, and it is checked by the building department inspectors as well. So certainly, everything is above board. I know there have been some concerns with that building. I've heard from residents at office hours, but certainly, we want to reassure them that the proper channels are being followed for that building.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, we're back to you for the first responder here. What would you change in how contract negotiations are conducted between city? Did I forget you?
Okay.
I am so sorry, Mr., I, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Abdullah?
I'd like to obviously presume that the right permits were pulled and the right zoning regulations were followed, et cetera, et cetera. I live near that particular building, and honestly, I think it's a beautiful building that's going up. It's probably a little larger than I'd probably like, but anytime a school goes up, I think it's a positive direction for the city to go in, so I personally have no problem with that. And I'd like to, like I mentioned, presume that the right permits and regulations are being followed. Nothing that I've personally seen as a real estate agent that looks out of line, but again, that doesn't make me the expert in that particular field. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Brown, we're back to you. What would you change in how contract negotiations are conducted between city and the unions?
I would first, first and foremost, hire, or at least seek, a professional contractor that has, that has negotiating capabilities and experience to represent the city. Obviously, we're mindful that the workers are unionized, and we have, we have an interest in getting the best talent, but we have to, at least, we have to be fiscally responsible in this city, and our residents need to get the most for their tax money. And the only way we can do that is really to hire someone that's well, I say, well-versed in both sides, as well as working for the city and the administration and the council, and not working for, or having an interest in the contract itself.
Thank you. Mr. Muscat?
I too believe that a professional negotiator is a necessary step. Anytime you look at two parties coming together and they negotiate a labor agreement, always have professional people negotiating these contracts, well-versed in labor relations, well-versed in union policy. In the past, we've had problems with a, with a police contract and a DPW contract. Things like that cannot go on in the future. It's just not good for the taxpayers of this city to constantly know where their tax money is being spent on contract negotiations. I'm a union guy, always have been, probably always will be, but you still have to be fiscally responsible to the taxpayers. You can't just give and keep giving without finding a way to cut back on some of the issues.
Thank you. Ms. Hicks Clayton?
All right. Well, I do agree with everyone that we do need a professional negotiator on behalf of the city. We have union contracts coming up, 2016, we have Ask Me and Fire, and 2017 Police. And of course, we want to be respectful to our city employees and our union. They want to be represented, but we are here to represent the city, to do what's in the best interest of the city. And of course, we want to be respectful to those union workers, because we want to bring forward top-quality employees, so, you know, their fair share, but yes, we have to look at the interests of our residents and our city and get the most benefit for our tax dollars, money, because we are the stewards of the taxpayers' dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Abdullah?
I personally would like to see that negotiated, being in the real estate business, negotiations are obviously a part of my business, and I personally would like to see that negotiated as a committee. From what I understand, sometimes it's done with just one person. I personally don't think it's a good idea. I think it should be a committee of people negotiating the contracts, with one of them being an expert in that particular field. It should also include one city council member, in my opinion, and one person from the mayor's department. So that's where you have an unbiased, unbiased negotiations. Now, with that being the case, I'd like to see a win-win type of situation. It doesn't have to be us versus them. In other words, it doesn't have to be the city versus the fire department or the police department, because what you want is, you want happy employees in the fire department and in the police department. And with them already doing a great job, obviously, we want to be on good terms with them. So my time's up, but we'll do whatever's best for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Apigian?
It's interesting that the idea that we negotiate with police and fire is at a different level than it is with the regular employees. Our regular employees aren't making gigantic money, and they don't have fantastic benefits. It's the police and fire that cost us the most, and they have very lucrative arrangements. And we don't do that alone. We have, I'm surprised, we have attorneys that we, that are working with us. We only have a part-time corporate counsel, but for almost every expertise of problems we encounter, we employ several legal firms. So it's not like we don't have our auditors advising us as to what we're doing. And in the case here, the mayor's got over 30 years' experience. If he doesn't know how to manage a contract by this time, we'll never learn. But I do agree with the idea that we should be involved. We're not, as a council, involved in negotiating contracts.
We're now through with our, we're now through with our questions. We've run out of time, so we're going to start our one-minute closing statements, and we're going to go in reverse order. So, Mr. Apigian, the floor is yours for a one-minute closing statement.
Thank you very much. I am, I have a very unique background. I am a design and professional, planning professional. I have professional degrees in architecture, master's degree in urban planning, I'm a licensed architect in the state of Michigan, I'm a licensed professional community planner, and a licensed builder as well. The most important thing is, in our backgrounds, is how we can effectuate the expertise that we have in the operation of the city. Unfortunately, I believe that our most important thing is to look at our charter. Our charter is archaic, and we need to seriously look at it, and we don't do it because it costs us a lot of money, unfortunately.
Mr. Abdullah?
First of all, thank you for your time. One of the things I'd like to work on in closing, I'd like to work on, as I mentioned earlier, a lot more economic development within the city. I think there's still a lot of streets, major streets within the city, that don't have enough businesses open there. And I think this is something that brings in, as a real estate agent, I know it brings in much more people moving into the neighborhoods, and then thus raise the values, and then thus better our city's budgets. I'd also like to do a lot more work on the flooding issues that's currently a problem in South Heights, and do whatever I can, within my power, the better that. And then lastly, I'd like to, you know, as I mentioned, as a real estate agent, what I've always noticed is kind of a divide between North Heights and South Heights, whether it's physical, economic, et cetera, et cetera. I'd like to bring the two sides of the city together to work for the betterment of our whole city. Thank you.
Ms. Hicks Clayton?
Thank you. I'm seeking reelection. My position is a public servant, and of course, we're responsible for a balanced budget. We're stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, being fiscally responsible and transparent, and making sure that information's accessible to our residents. I advocate for civic engagement and increased communication opportunities. The city council must set the bar for public service in Dearborn Heights high, and I'm eager to meet that challenge. I bring extensive knowledge and commitment to our community, and I'm actively engaged. My abilities to research the facts, collaborate with others, and speak particularly on issues are important to the residents and to our city. I will provide an intelligent, conscientious voice for our residents and our community. And I want to thank everyone for being here and watching, and encourage you to vote.
Thank you. Mr. Muscat?
Thank you for everybody showing up here tonight. Thank you for the League of Women Voters for having this forum. The city, the city's problems are bigger than just one person. You'd have to work together with everyone to make things happen. My biggest thing is to listen to the citizens, because ultimately, they're the ones that pay for everything. And if you don't listen to them and try to help them in what their wants and needs are, we're going to fail as a city. And over the years, I think they've done a good job listening, but I think it can get better. Too many people have had problems and continue to have problems and see no change. I hope to change that for everyone, and I will work as hard as I can to help each and every one with their problems, and work with other council people to solve those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Brown?
As a 16-year resident of Dearborn Heights, as I mentioned earlier, I was thrust into researching and finding out what's going on with our money and our, and our city and the flood and the waters. And I believe that my skills as a controls engineer and, and engineering in particular to identify a problem, to identify solutions and options, to bring those forth, I've actually done that at the council meetings, even though they've been rejected. I believe that I started that after the flood, and I said, I could either become bitter and complain, or I can do something about it. I've done something about it. My personal skills, my personal disciplines, I've done that with independence, the autonomy to operate as an individual with integrity, with objectivity, and most of all, with transparency. And I ask on November 3rd that you give me a chance to do it as a councilman.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the candidates for their participation. The League of Women Voters and the citizens of Dearborn Heights appreciate the commitment it takes to run for office. You have a fine pool of candidates here to choose from. Before we close, I want to remind you that there is a Dearborn Heights ballot proposal to amend the city charter, as well as a bond proposal for voters who live in Dearborn Heights School District Number 7. For further information on the ballot proposals, as well as more information about the candidates, go to the League of Women Voters' online voter guide at vote411.org. The League of Women Voters would like to thank the city of Dearborn Heights for making this important public service event possible. For a list of broadcast times, go to the League's website, l w v d d h dot org. And if you have any questions about whether or not you are registered to vote, check the Michigan Secretary of State's website at michigan.gov slash S O S. For those who have not previously registered to vote, the last day to register for the November 3rd election is October 5th. The polls will be open on Tuesday, November 3rd, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Absentee ballots are available from the city clerk's office. This concludes our forum. Thank you very much.[1780.13][1780.13][applause][1781.13][1781.13][music]